Working on my show right now, trying to get over it, take those, so. Working on the brainstorm.
Starting from public hearing. Hearing none? Okay, sorry for our educational showcase type.
Hey, and by way of introduction, that's guests with us this evening, we have Jeff Pack and Anbles from the Chamber, actually, and Dan Fogarty, who's representative of the Chamber and the College. And they would like to talk to us about our existing partnership and ways that might enhance that partnership. So with that brief introduction of them. So I'll give a little bit of a brief introduction.
So nice to see all of you. It's a little bit of deja vu being here in this room. We wanted to talk to you a little bit about a concept that was hatched about the beginning of this year. And the impetus came from Empire State Development's desire to create a model of economic development hubs. And college campuses and specifically the SUNY system, college campuses were one of the focal points of a spot that could be appropriate to create a hub. So Dan and Ann and I started conversations about whether that was something that the Chamber would be interested in or whether that made any sense. And the more that we kind of fleshed it out, it seemed to be something that had some advantages. First of all, the Chamber is a two county chamber, remember, it's the Fulton County, Montgomery County Chamber. We have no presence right now, brick and mortar presence in Montgomery County. The presence that we have in Fulton County is in Glover'sville and in an aging building. And it's a building that is underutilized by the Chamber. So a large portion of the space is unheated, so it can't be used most of the year. We've had some significant issues with problems to the physical plant, roof leaks and things like that that have been problematic. And there are the ongoing possible along with that. Having a presence on college campus where we could be kind of the entry point for the county. Having access to this room where we could announce or host public officials, bolt events is advantageous. Having a place that's neutral for the two counties to have folks come and introduce themselves to the Chamber, utilize the resource of the Chamber. And also the importance of the partnerships that the Chamber has with the P-Tech and with the College and with the CTE. Workforce development has become a major focus of the Chamber. We were fortunate in some ways, it seemed a little bit scary when it happened when the Island of New York programs moved away from the Chamber and back to the counties to control in Fulton, Montgomery County. But in the long run, it's been kind of the best thing that could have happened with Chamber. So we've been able to take the focus off the management of the Island of New York plans and the prescriptive nature that comes along with that and be able to be much more hyper focused on the needs of the members of the organization. With that, one of the things that we recognize is that the physical plant that we're in in Glover'sville is our largest expense outside of payroll. And dedicating the amount of money that we do to holding that building together seems like it's inordinate where we'd rather be spending money on programs that benefit the building up of our current businesses, the attraction of businesses to come here and support of tourism and other economic development issues that are taken up by some of the other county entities. So we, we've continued our discussions and we've gotten far enough down the road that we wanted to bring the concept to you as the trustees and ask for your input. Hopefully eventually your endorsement, but to introduce the idea and see where we can go from there. So from here, I'll turn this over to Ann, we'll talk to you more about the programmatic work that the change does and how that may fit well here. And then Dan is going to talk more about how the ESD program works and how it integrates with FM and we said. Thanks, folks.
Thank you. Nina? I'd just like to talk to you a little bit about our business education partnership program that we have with our HFM, HFM BOCs and the Chamber. This has been a decade long partnership and we are happy to have this partnership and also have a presence here on campus at FMCC. This is a program that we have support here when they're in their fourth to sixth year. And we actually already have a presence here at the, or at the campus at SUNY FM. We have Natalie May, who is our business education partnership coordinator, and she helps the students if they need advice, guidance, and she also helps with obtaining internships for SUNY FMCC and SUNY Cobleskill. So we have had this partnership in collaboration with SUNY FM for many years. We also partner with events on HR consortiums. We have a partner job fair and we also with apprenticeships as well. And we work very closely with Dan and his team with collaboration and continuation of partnerships. The entities show the importance of partnering to help forge a new workforce and continue to work hard to assist our local regional businesses. Chamber works very closely with businesses and community partnerships here at SUNY FM. We are also proud to be cheerleaders for the great events that you just had with dual mission for you all, me and of course the cyber range. So just a little history about our partnership with HFM BOCs, it started in 2013. We began in pathways technology, early college and high school, which is also known as P-Tech. And in 2014 with the addition of some pathway programs. And we also helped CTE career and technical education since 2019. So we're very proud of this partnership and we're very grateful for Dr. Tucker Miller and Dr. Dave Ziskin, who also continue to keep this partnership strong for our community's future. So this is actually a video of that highlights partnerships with BOCs programming and local business. So it's going to be a nice little ad first.
And our BOCs to have a great relationship with our Chamber and to our student programs has a unique relationship with our businesses. Career and technical education for over 25, 30 years has probably worked with over 200 of our regional businesses with internships for our seniors that have all supported companies.
There's some ways that businesses can partner with BOCs program. We're always looking for mentorships, having guests come in as a guest speaker. Also the key is real world opportunity for our students. So having our businesses possibly respond. Allowing our students to internals drill world critical.
Finish a program one year ago, seeing much of the workplace, it's really one of the main reasons I feel like because the tour I had, I didn't know what the place was about. So I've been here once before, I was checking the main appeals, sorry, so all we, it's interesting, I do it three at a time. A lot of people, people write the team board, that's why I kind of turned it into a little. That's all. Again, so just happen, then, and it was all things, they love staying at the shops.
We've got several locations, these guys have been in this for years. I came to four years ago and been in the hills for their whole career, that's top of their career. The dirt detectors, that's what it's on. Five days, I can convince the state, working with the, working with the box. I was nervous my first start, I was like, oh, once I get a hire, this is fine. It's not, it's not, it's not, I'm doing, I'm just getting used to that. Work, wherever you've been working starts. If they can, if they don't, if they don't have, then that's the process for getting the internships.
Very direct. Where, first I was actually scared, but then second, the first couple of days, I knew that that was something I really wanted to do.
Oh, that can begin, I just said in the meeting, I presented this at REDC and technology is sometimes not my friend and that's just another funny notch on that. So, um, besides the SNL or we don't, we can just go back to. A little comic relief, I guess. There we go. Thank you. Just so, just to highlight the P-Tech video and how it promotes and presents real world opportunities. It's a six year sequence that emphasizes on individuals' pathways to completion, workplace experiences, mentorships and in-depth project-based learning. There are six paths, or there's five pathways, excuse me, with advanced manufacturing, agriculture, business, computer science and health and medical with 20 associate degree option from SUNY FM and SUNY Cobleskill. And I also just like to highlight that students that choose P-Tech, they will graduate with their high school degree and their associate's degree. And that's all included and for free. So we're quite proud of that program. CTE offers students avenue for career exploration and they have 15 programs that are really impressive, modern and innovative. So as you can see, the Chamber provides a number of opportunities. We implement an annual employability skills survey to make sure that we're, we're making sure that students have the skills needed to be successful in the region. We have opportunities for mentorships, workplace Wednesdays where business partners will come in and talk to the students about professional skills such as writing, developing a resume and just skills that they would need for the workforce. The Chamber itself has used the P-Tech 2D art class to create our hiking challenge patch, which is a really great project that was initiated in 2021. So we can go to side, we can skip that one. We can, if you're interested in seeing more videos, the P-Tech has a YouTube channel and they're really great visuals to see the students, how they have real world opportunities, how opportunities have had landed employment and it's all in the Fulton, Montgomery region. So we, these are just the additional partnerships I just wanted to highlight again. We're very grateful for our partnership with SUNY FM. We have very successful events that we've had here and just looking forward to the future. We have some events that we have going on, so we can, if you'd like to join us for our 10 years celebration with P-Tech, that's October 3rd and October 16th is a career con. Jeff really had a really nice summary of with how we have our partnership. We had an opportunity for possible funding and exploration for collaborations for the Chamber itself. We also work very closely with our local EDCs and IDAs. But for the Chamber, since we have a presence here on campus, especially with the P-Tech and CTE programs and the partnerships that we have with Dan and his team, we just thought to explore a little bit more. There's no rush, we are, we are in Glover'sville, we are on Main Street. We recognize the downtown revitalization initiatives and we want to ensure that if there is a buyer that has the same goals that align with the DRI and keep the building open, then there's possibility for conversation. But we just have, we just had this opportunity to explore and discuss a little bit more. If we were on campus, the resources that we could use together, a unified voice to have. If I'm out as Chamber going to a business and they want to explore options of apprenticeships or opportunities that the college provides, we can certainly go into a conversation and have, and just kind of help each other, market each other as well to a business and just promote each other and support each other as our programs are similar. And we have the one goal aligned is to help our community and help our students succeed. So again, the cost of the building is, is quite high. You know, we do our best to maintain it, but us, if the building was sold, we would solely put programming and our members in the forefront. We could bring some programming into the area that would bring more value to our membership and also enhance our scholarship program. So that would be the goal, that would be the plan, the strategy plan to let the public know as well. And of course, just combining our strengths, we can supply our capabilities and workforce and help us to deliver even greater solutions. So I thank you very much for your time. I really appreciate this opportunity to talk to the Board of Trustees. And Dan is going to go into a little bit further into the funding opportunities as much. Thank you very much. And Dr. Tucker Miller.
You're welcome.
Appreciate you.
And we'll see, my voice has been going for the last couple of days, so it's been good for Tucker Miller. Now I haven't been able to talk to as much, you know, I like to talk. And this will be very great for all of you, but what Ann and Jeff touched upon, I really want to talk about what New York State Empire State Development is looking at as a very unique innovative option for the campus and for the region. The Mohawk Empowers is a new opportunity that the Mohawk region is looking to create workforce development hubs. And what the state has said in recent past is a lot, their recent economic and workforce development hubs have failed because they don't have the components that they're looking for. So as you can see by the graph here, I kind of tried to illustrate what you need to have that successful model. You need training and education, which our region has. You need those business partnerships, Jan and her team does a tremendous job at. You need government support, which we very much rely on our two counties. And then from our two counties, you have the state and regional entities like Empire State Develop. So this, that strategic planning model leads kind of into this slide here. What showcases strength of what all of those entities coming together. Fulton County supporting the cyber range, the Chamber supporting this event. The training and education that's going in to be the number one cyber range in the entire country to do what we're about to do. So it kind of showcases what we're already doing and why Empire State Development looks at us as a leader. So when we look at bringing the possibility of the Chamber on, you know, we look what the state and other entities would like to see. And I bring all this up because we're checking a lot of those boxes. So, sorry, we'll take any questions that you do have, but the Mohawk Valley Regional Economic Development Council has a vision statement and you'll see with what we're doing in our region is very much what they and the state are looking to, to have. I will turn it back to Jeff to answer any of your questions.
Just to add on, so before we do that, what Dan didn't mention was that the Mohawk Empowers is $10 million. It has been allocated to Mohawk Valley and the whole region for initiatives like this. So there is money behind what they're trying to accomplish.
So basically what we're trying to accomplish is focusing Montgomery, Fulton County into one geographic location that is accessible to both counties. And also get rid of the white horse that you got, the white elephant.
So I'm assuming the location. Some idea?
No, I think it all depends on what we attempt to do with the. It can be as small as a couple of offices or it could be, you know, as, as big as we want it to be. But initially, you know, if we're just talking about the Chamber and we're talking about a couple of offices. That, that really makes sense. But it isn't a whole building.
So would it be a contract or some voluntary amount sent back to the college? There would be a.
If you've been looking to this, even if you didn't, if there wasn't a transition with the building, Main Street, it's still, it wouldn't be able to perhaps move, but still the Chamber decides what they're doing with that.
No, we wouldn't, we would not have the building abandoned. So there would be a plan and there's no, no, we wouldn't have to have an RFP for a realtor. I mean, this, this would be a big process because it is with our foundation as well. So, you know, AG would have to be involved. It's not the process overnight. So there's been some conversation with our upstairs, which has been promoted for. So with the right person, with the right strategic plan that would align with our goals and the DRI's goals perhaps, they could possibly not only just rent the upstairs space, but just by building a fair address.
So your physical moving to here. If it was all range, it'd still be based on what happens with that property.
Correct. Yes.
Yes and no. It's, it's, we, the first thing we explored was the idea of making this a salad. Having a salad, we kind of went down that road, the less attractive that it is. So kind of the confusion that it has, it's, we have a very small staff, so allocating staff between to be getting jobs done. The Chamber became that. It's the building itself. Right now, we have had an entity approach us independently with interest in the building. So we of course took that to the Foundation Board to discuss. We had two sessions, discussions, Chamber Foundation Board. They endorse the idea of the Chamber vacating that building as long as there is a viable plan for the building to be reused or downsized. Whereas if somebody wanted to buy it and hold it, hope somebody came along to do something to this someday, we're not selling.
Sure, you have membership of that too.
So, so the only way that we actually make a move is if there was a plan in place. So it may not be predicated on that being a finished plan, but if we had a plan that was a place that was approved by the Foundation Board and that we felt was viable, then that would trigger central to this field.
I think the concept is excellent and it's a very informative presentation for the presentation.
But both, obviously, both boards, both the Montgomery, Fulton County, or supervisors and. How do they feel towards this? I don't know that we can speak to that right now. I think both John's here this evening, Greg, I think he's got some contact with supervisors. It would be a next step for us, if this was a chance that trustees and divorce to approach that topic. Now, with the Chamber's move here, it's more important that the county's approval. College is involved in this than it is the Chamber's. It's for kind of secondary that we don't see funding. And we receive some small amount of program that funding, county without funding. So we could have more freedom of action in the world.
Yes.
I'm here strictly as an interest to the board of supervisors. And as this has been presented tonight, I will probably ask Ann here, it may be Jeff, to give a presentation either to our Economic Development Committee or to the entire. So I'll be in discussions, couple of people. Thinking about this, another economic development, this is coming Wednesday. I'm not quite sure that we'd be quite ready for that, but.
Yeah, in July.
Yeah, I'm repeating, the second Monday of July, before we can move into July. I'll talk to some other people soon. As I presented tonight, I would like to make the presentation.
Yeah, I had, I don't say community, but kind of county, they had discussion with committee chair like that and with Ken Rhodes. And they were both supportive of the concept, welcome, further discussion. About it. Eric.
I do too. Want to feel.
Yeah, yeah. And, and you know, other individuals with Fulton County who felt it was important that this group talked about it first. First step.
I think it makes more sense to have the college where you have the education, the students coming through.
I agree. I'd certainly like to speak. And then, yeah, I'm sorry, if you're interested in or P-Tech, when students are back in session. Thank you for your support tonight. And then the folks on the board. Well, thank you. Okay. Thank you.
For accuracy. Fonds are in effect to approve the. Trustee Preston, any discussion on motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Jane, motion carries. Great Chairman's Board, first we start with the. Last month, I asked trustee Landrio to serve as the Chair of the nominating committee for the election of officers of the Board of Trustees, unfortunately I can't be the Chair for ladies. So I will call on, I also asked trustee Preston Perry to serve on that committee. And I would ask trustee Landrio to occupy the vote.
So Wendy and Grant, I had discussed the matter and maybe just come on.
I cannot hear you guys.
They'd like you to be the vice chair, Tybe, and to be the chair.
Okay.
So this would follow the same program that we followed. Quite a few numbers in this. We didn't really have. Costs to, who served as the chair, vice chair. So there's a few of us that we thought was fair assumption to that we would rotate between two counties. So for instance, if the chair is from the government county position, after two years certainly leaving that position, then vice chair, next county. That person would be part. We've been successful in doing that in the last 16.
We've been successful in doing that in the last sixteen years. So that's what we've done. It's an unending policy, which I would ask them to change it. That's all.
It will be presented to the trustees in the July for offering better. And last week in your.
Simply a question. I, I assume that the treasurer, the secretary, we'll say the same. It's okay. So the initial slate would be. Mr. Jasowitz as chair, Ms. Bogdanov as vice chair. Treasurer would be Jesse Holsager and secretary would be Maria Vasco. So that would be your proposed slate.
That will be on the agenda for review next month. And last week, the emails were sent with the president's evaluation. This is just a reminder that if like you say, this did, then that was the time to find gorgeous email and submit. Now, okay, for your. Mr. Greg's mail and he's not sure that you. Find it in your inbox and fill out the over three answers for our next.
This is embedded.
And then we play update. I will move on to the president's report.
Thanks, Madam Chair. I will. Sir, and. Get that up. Okay. So. You've heard already, I think, the lieutenant governor was here last week and visited the cyber range. He's also here for the Mohawk Valley Regional Development Council, which had its meeting here at campus. So as you guys have been joining us, a part of that meeting, I did have the opportunity to have some. One-on-one time with the lieutenant governor and I talked with him. Primarily about the community college funding formula and the fact that it's. Attention and focus of our friends and all. Listened, he took notes and we'll see whether or not anything transpires from that, but. He specifically wanted to come to see the cyber range and he had a tour. They gave him a presentation and he really asked good questions and seemed to agree that. We have had follow-up conversation with the governor's cybersecurity chief about potential training opportunities for New York State here on our campus and. So that would be, that would be a good thing. And we've been getting a lot of, also the people from purpose. Whether they're training cybersecurity staff, they're interested in our investment in this as well. So. It's been a good couple of weeks with cyber range. Continuing on that theme, Professor Marty Wapple, most of you know, and who has been one of the key members of. Our computer science faculty and bringing the cyber range to reality, has been invited by IBM as part of their team to present at the AW West Summit in DC next week. So they're picking up all the expenses and want to feature. Marty and, and our implementation specifically of the cyber range is part of the first. And they are hoping first of the many, though we are still the first and they're excited to tell our story. We're excited to be at that conference. That's nice. Whoops. Just, just to keep you informed of where we are with the budget process, Tuesday. Montgomery County committees passed our, our public hearing. Eight votes to next Tuesday. So the Montgomery County Legislature will take action on setting a public hearing for our budget. If I was to the way that they normally do that at the July meeting of legislature. Next Thursday, Fulton County will, will the Fulton County Vice Committee will do the same, but we consider our request for volunteering, they'll move on to their full board. And they're typically at their office meeting or the caucus, they will have their public hearing. And then. Usually that's a day or two in court chastity has to be their problem, so on. But we are following track at this. Did, I certainly introduced to the Montgomery County Legislature while reminding them, because it really wasn't the first introduction to this, would guess that's valid or. Didn't say a lot, so I don't know how to take that hat. Yeah, that was too warm, I think. Great news by Rad Tech program. They're historically high achievers, but, but this year's class did achieve a hundred percent first time pass rate on the. The JRC, their licensure exam, so they are all ready to go and be licensed grad techs. So that's, that's pretty cool. And yesterday, our lead of public ceiling here, but Greg, Greg Young and our C-Step program, sorry, I'm going to talk about this. Greg Young and our C-Step program and step program that are very first aviation day out of Fulton County Airport. And I'll let them fill in with more details, but I certainly wanted to make sure that you heard about that. That was like a really neat event. Glad to see that that was the first of what we hope to become. Mr. Fogarty and I were in Syracuse on Tuesday to sign, sign another dual admission agreement. This time with Syracuse University. So we have a number of programs through their college professional studies where it's been set the opportunity to. Come to FMCC, become admitted to Fulton FMCC and Syracuse University through their first two years of their bachelor degree with us. And then segue on to a Syracuse bachelor's degrees. They rolled out the red carpet for our sentence, it was anyways signing that. So another, another. Nice dual admission agreement that we have set up. Obviously we have the all-day one that we got a lot of price out of earlier in the spring. We also have the leadership agreements with Spigo, Hobel Skill. And a couple of other private supports. New York State Community College Leadership Academy concluded their first class this last week. We had three members of that inaugural class. You can see them pictured there, but Dan Fogarty was, was part of that. Pam McCall. Our associate dean for student success retention and opportunity and Emily Towne, who's our director of the behavioral health workforce education training program. Were all members of the first, this was the first time that they've done this academy. And then the second class has started. Starts this week and we have two members of that class. Greg Young is a member of that and that is John Vasco, our assistant. So it's a nice program that they put together to provide leadership development and. It was trying to create the next generation of community college leaders, proud, proud of all of their accomplishments. And we'll see if we can get this to work. We have a little mini. Just as another example of, if you don't follow our social media, that went out on our social media. Another reminder of all the good things that have been happening this year so far and encouraging students. Or potential students to be part of what we're doing here. So that's all I have prepared for a formal report, but I've had to take in certain questions. They can't find anyone else.
To report your packet and we'll mark the presentation report with the C-Step.
Um, I, your report is actually in your packet. The only thing I would like to add is that the Pro Gallery will be hosting this year. It's their twenty-fifth annual. In twenty-five years for the Pro Gallery and they'll be taking artists that have been showing their works there over the last twenty-five years. And having the show begin the first day of class is September fourth. We will be having that one run for a couple of months and we will have an opening, which I'll. Make sure I, it won't be on September fourth, but they usually do the reception sometimes throughout the, the show. So I will keep you all informed of that as well. And you can read the rest of the report in your packets.
Thank you. Trustee Pepper, tell us what's happening in the world of.
Sure, we're all scrutinized to do this, please. So I'm just gonna hit on a couple of highlights of it. Your subgrade budget versus actual was from a period of nine, one, twenty-three. Five thirty, one twenty-four, seven and five percent around this for a year. To Jake, the actual expenses and occurrences that are at sixty-nine percent of the budget. Your financial statement included revenue expenses for the period of nine, one, twenty-three, four thirty, twenty-four. Revenues included billing activities from four thirty, twenty-four and cover the fall of two thousand twenty-three, winter twenty-four, spring twenty-four and summer twenty-four semesters. This is a hundred and five point one percent of our tuition budget and expenses are fifty-nine point one percent of the budget. And again, there were budget transfers, contracts, and there were reports were provided that they were all kind. I think that one action that we need to take, um, now chair, that is that I'd like to sponsor that they can transfer. Funds and that transfer of funds is for a current time standing position for middle states. And I believe it's going to go from the, to the library, from the library, from the library to the, or from the institution, to general institution to the library fund.
Is there a second motion?
Second.
Uh, from the Jasmine, any? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain motion carries.
No, there's not the next one.
I'm sorry.
The judge has helped these a lot of coming up. Or the waste of a food plant. Forces. And all. Of the maintenance back to the. There's a body cannabis system that has been turned into more than useful. Also recommend that not to sell, is under non-auction, no meaning. Action to the net, recently specialized. Exclusive. I am saying these five pounds. Thanks. The president recommends that the board trustees prove use of auctions, international, animated auctions. No minimum bid, alternate president. This is an on.
I'll sponsor that auction discussion. And also is it just. Was it self?
Yeah, I hear there's no minimum bids.
Auctions international doesn't significantly work with help with. I had one that if you don't like the.
All in favor?
Aye.
Abstain. Right?
I can pull it out.
That's right.
Call me brother, Chris, I guess. I think you better share. Honestly, a lot of what I was gonna say, that's been covered, so. Take him on here. Me second, Carly attended the Mohawk Valley Regional Economic Development Media for college. That can be highlighted speakers from SUNY Poly discuss their success through advancing programs. And that next meeting will be held here on June twenty. So we're trying to Mohawk Valley Workforce Development Stateful Roundtable Conference at Mohawk Valley Community College. Fourth, that conference opened discussion about community factories and connection between employers, job seekers. During that conference, they discussed barriers, successes and workforce development. And then like the cyber range, oh, near and dear to my heart, crack brewery, pre-apprenticeship summit course involved in this. I, that actually was a program that's told about four to seven PM on Monday night. It actually started on the tenth, so I missed my little on it, going through July twenty-second. The first three will be held on the campus of SUNY FM and the remaining classes will be hands on at Stump City. That's fully funded, apprenticeship provided thanks to SUNY and in partnership with. On successful completion, students will be awarded a SUNY.
The full report is in our packets, but here is covering. So summer is underway with many activities within the student Ferris Division. Here, do that highlight our commitment to be the community's college. The athletic department is hosting summer leagues for local athletes. The admissions office held a nursing information session on June fifth and the guidance council breakfast on June seventh. The team of staff of, from the student involvement office, commission student success and collaborating offices are busy planning county summit orientation sessions for July and August to welcome new students to the campus. And get them academically, academically prepared for the fall semester. So Liberty Partnership Program, LLP sponsored a field trip day to FMCC campus on June seventh. On campus P-Tech students were also invited to join this day of fun, learning about academic during three programs that FMCC has to offer. The LPP summer program, games are a place to start in July and they are collaborating with smart scholars, also from the Greater Amsterdam school district. The Science Technology Entry Program or STEP hosted their annual awards banquet on May thirtieth and approximately fifty attendees included STEP. Middle and high school students, their parents, FMCC faculty and C-Step mentors. The STEP Summer Academy is being planned for July as well. The collegiate Science Technology Entry Program, C-Step, held their C-Step advisory board meeting on June eleventh. The advisory board consists of students, faculty, college, school administrators, staff and business and community leaders. Will offer their input to the program for, and our calendar events. So that is my full report.
She had to add, but she had an A B show that there. But they did have about twenty students that love in the air and groups of two. Sure. Very successful. They have seen the bite up paper.
Some results is, yeah, they have a nice poll coming up tomorrow, so we get out and take a look. Um, one of the things I wanted to highlight was really nice, um, things that was done by. I felt that was really crucial considering healthcare disparities based on base gender socioeconomic status. And also the epidemic, the guilty epidemic. Many of us have experienced with that. Some struggles in that area. All right, let's see. Goat, you have a good to that. Next time we come and get out there, it's a lot of, I'm always a fan of goats and I'm gonna tell a joke, but you might come to the Ego Test. So, and then see how you split that. So, um. Oh, the other piece about the healthcare one is the psychology, eco-psychology, environmental best to see, so act for next time. And that's a really nice thing to see too. It says that's diversity, force them to get in China, press them to eat, so health issues. Sociology, health and happiness, ultimately, maybe run on that. Spring, just kind of the one for some of those topics also. Let's see, June is five month, COVID, yesterday and my passion for getting out of my country, so in two thousand and eighteen, I sent in. Posse and international spoke about integrating one from this human rights in the classroom and culminating behind. We have a two-day conference coming up. First day of inclusion throughout the state. The whole new presentation of creating learning communities, integrating one from this passionate, not about communication in the classroom. And what's really cool about this, we must get out there. See what you can say about this, you know, push yourself. So I'm really excited about what people can say about what we're doing in the classroom here. You need to share that with you these days too. So like fifteen minute thing. So I can give you a brief. Question with the box. As well as maybe. Thank you.
I'll just talk about one of my paid time presentation.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Norma Rurley designed as senior administrator, HR administrator as of May seventeen. Bernie Bishop will start on June twentieth as our new academic advisor, a career chat with specialists, her name is Steve Bolter. Bachelor of Art, Psychology and Master of Science, School Councilman, grade one at University. His work as a school counselor in the last seven years has held positions at the Mercola Seacenter, Montier High and Chrisston McCollum Community School. And presently there's a search underway of senior HR administrator for time in that. Please my report unless there's any questions, Madam Chair.
So other business to go for the committee? Hey, so Dr. Druckenmiller has requested a brief acceptance to discuss employment contract. And we have a bunch of that trustee Jasowitz, that is. Trustee Preston, on, on the mayor, or opposed, um, we will not be convening for any business of the board afterwards, so if else this is great to go and.
Actually, I can say something. Of course. Oh, you know, I hate just to get out of one things with all the good things that we hear in these meetings that we sort of just. Except when it goes in one ear, but there's a lot of urgent activity that goes on. I'm very impressed as a trustee of the things that are happening. I did want to just say congratulations to the foundation, and I believe it was thirty thousand that they brought, turned the raise. And a lot of work I know goes from Leslie and Maria, but there were so many volunteers from the college there that day. And it was very, it was just very nice. So thank you, Peter Hart, I think. I think that was a lot.